Good evening and welcome to the City of Pasco Council Workshop Meeting. The council thanks you for being part of our city government. At workshop meetings, the council discusses issues, but no formal actions is taken. Given the recent dramatic rise in COVID case rates within the community and due to the size of the council chambers and numbers of attendees, masks will be required for all attending the meeting in person, vaccinated or not. Agenda packets are available on the City of Pasco website at www.pasco-wa.gov/agenda. Please note that the city council meetings may be accessed through GoToWebinar and that this meeting is also being televised live on Pasco TV, Channel 191, on Spectrum Cable in Pasco and Richland, and is streamed on the city's Facebook page, website, and YouTube channel. This and previous council meeting video is available on the city's website. Lastly, the public will submit their comments and/or questions by contacting the city manager or city clerk or using the feedback form on the city's website. And with housekeeping issues out of the way, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Alvarado.
Present.
Maloney.
Present.
Milne.
Present.
Roach.
Roach has his excuse tonight?
Great. Councilmember Serrano.
Here.
Mayor Protem Barajas.
Present.
And Mayor Martinez.
Present. Thank you, and maybe I'll rise for the flag, please. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next, we'll go into verbal reports from council members. Anybody have anything they'd like to report that they've done over the week? If not, I do have some I want to share during miscellaneous items, or later on in the meeting, but for now, we'll move right on to the items for discussion for tonight's workshop meeting. And tonight, we have a broadband access within city limits. Director Recha, would you like to kick us off with the first item for tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and evening, council. We have Scott Reese from Franklin PUD and Ben Hooper from Franklin PUD as well, present to give this presentation to council. Essentially, the reason that they're here is to give you an overview of the state of broadband access for the City of Pasco residents. I know that this was a topic that was discussed over the pandemic, as well as in conjunction with the usage of our ARPA funds. With that, I will hand over the presentation to Scott.
I'll be really brief, and then I'm just going to turn it over to Ben, who's over our broadband. But we just want to express our appreciation for the opportunity to be here to talk about this subject, broadband, which is highly important to us. Throughout the pandemic, we've really strived to provide service within the municipal, but as everybody knows, there are certain areas that are underserved and unserved. And so, we appreciate the opportunity to come and visit with you tonight and answer any questions you may have. And with that, I'll turn it over to our expert, Ben Hooper.
Thank you. Hello, Ben.
Hello. Thank you for having me. Ben Hooper, the broadband manager for Franklin PUD. We actually serve the whole county. So, can we get the next slide, or do I get that? There we go. All right. Here's a little background on Franklin PUD. We started broadband back in 2002. We served the entire county, just not our electrical serving area. Currently, we are wholesale-only model, which means we're an open-access network. Sell to 33 different retail service providers in our area. Roughly 350 miles of fiber all over the county, quite a bit here in Pasco. 875 customers through our service providers. 59 access points for wireless service, anything from 10 meg's up to 100 meg's. And 11 points of presence. And the points of presence are buildings, cabinets, electronics, enclosures, where we house our equipment. Some of the services we provide: dark fiber, wholesale internet, Wi-Fi, co-location services for folks that need space, that don't have their own buildings, looking for off-site data storage, and we do lit services of many different types. Here's some activity to date. 2019 was a pretty good year. 148 total customers. 2020, and these are new customers and renewals. 2020, when COVID really started kicking off, we saw a drastic increase, especially in our wireless customers, fiber customers, our fixed wireless. You see that? So, we were a lot busier that year. We were 235 new services. Oops. Let's go back one. All right. 2021 to date, still going fairly strong. We're going to beat our numbers from 2019, may not get to the same numbers as 2020. And this is just a map overview of what we have in the area for fiber. It's available on our website. We pretty much have fiber everywhere around the Pasco area. We don't go into a lot of residential neighborhoods, primarily the business, anchor institutions, City of Pasco sites, et cetera. So, a little bit about other providers in the area. Currently, there's two major private providers in the area. Lumen, which was formerly CenturyLink, they run basically DSL and some fiber optics in the area. You've got Spectrum Charter, they're running fiber, and the Coax plant, kind of a hybrid plant in some of the older areas. We are the one public entity that have a wholesale network here. Fairly small Wi-Fi footprint in Pasco, larger fiber network by large, and once again, wholesale-only. LS Network is another private carrier that's in the area now. I think they became a franchisee two or three years ago, and we're seeing them with some services in the area. And then we have several other, what we call WISPs, Wireless Internet Providers: Pocket Inet, Zitele, Desert Winds, Telco Wire Repair, and there's some others in the area. And some of those are also our service providers. Some of the things that concern us, these are things we hear on pretty much a daily basis. There's pockets in Pasco that aren't adequately served. These are some of the older neighborhoods. Maybe they didn't get infrastructure in originally. It's the age of the plant, or they're getting inconsistent internet speeds, sub-25 megabits. Sometimes, they have internet hits during the day when everybody's on. A lot of things we run into, providers, we're overbuilding each other. There's a lot of time, we're doing a lot of redundancy, there's three or four of us going into the same place. We might be building, Charter might be building, CenturyLink might be building, and even some of our RSPs or franchises are building in the same areas. So, we're stacked on top of each other. Coordination, or a lack thereof on some of the residential and commercial developments, it's not always cohesive. We don't always know about everyone that's going in. You know, builders do a good job with us, but we want to make sure we're getting infrastructure, getting the pipe in the ground when these places are open. Trenches are open, joint trench is huge with us. We know about it, we can get in. Make sure we're getting the conduit in, making sure we're getting fiber in, doing whatever we need to, we don't have to open that ground again. It's been getting better over the years. We've developed relationships, but still, when you look at it, we need to make sure we get that in the ground. Every time, we've got a couple places we know that didn't get it in the ground, and now they don't get service. The other thing, continued population and commercial growth. We're still one of the fastest-growing areas in this state, definitely. More commercial, we see coming in all the time, small commercial, large commercial. We've got Costco coming in, we know the Road 100 area is going to be blowing up. We need to make sure that's taken care of, so that we don't run into any issues. And with that, I will open it up for any questions, discussions.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hooper. Any questions or comments from council?
This is Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Martinez, and thank you, Mr. Hooper and Mr. Reese. Over the last year, I know we had some local community members who were not served well for any broadband, just a couple blocks over from me, actually. We know that there's a couple other pockets. What are our options for serving those customers? How can we help make sure that they are served? I think later on, I think we'll be talking about some of the ARPA funding, and I noticed that there was a specific item that was, the definition of underserved does not apply to anybody in Pasco, and I guess I'm finding the odds with what you're saying there. So, I guess I'm trying to understand, like, who's underserved, and how do we go about rectifying that?
Well, by the federal definition, it's 25 meg's right now. By the state definition, underserved is 100 meg's or less, or 300 meg's less, depending upon where the funding's coming from. I think I know the spot you're talking about over there on 25th, not very far away. They actually didn't get, that's where I talked about infrastructure, they didn't get anything in the ground there. So, now that's a construction project. The only way we fix those is honestly dollars. We have to go in there, we have to build. We can do that through a hybrid wireless model, where we bring fiber and can get them 100 meg, 200 meg at their household, which means we'll put things up on poles. We can go in there, we can do fiber to the home. But it really boils down to dollars and cents. And we know there's other pockets, where east of 395, we know there's pockets that were formerly the county, what we refer to as the doughnut hole, that maybe didn't have all the plant in that they needed. Speeds aren't real consistent. Some of the older areas, the plant just hasn't been upgraded, and that needs to be addressed. If they're going to get consistent speed, if we're still going to see people working from home as much as we have the past year and a half, two years.
Great, I appreciate that. Yeah, that neighborhood over there off of 25th has service now. They were able to work through Charter, Spectrum to get that resolved, so they're in working order, last I checked on them. But I know there's other areas, so I guess I'd really appreciate if there's known areas, I'd be really interested in that being provided to us, if you have that, or you understand how we can get a hold of that, so we can make sure we're making informed decisions on how to make sure to serve our community. So, thank you.
Yes, not a problem.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Anybody else?
Yeah, this is Councilman Serrano, and maybe I just kind of missed it. I'm trying to get the bottom-line takeaway here, here, Mr. Reese and Hooper. Is there something specific that the city can do, either in partnership with PUD or with private entities, to improve things, or is this more of a, hey, you know, you guys need to have a plan moving forward, you know, you guys being us, the city? I guess I'm just trying to struggle a little bit here with what the takeaway is, and again, whether there's an action item for us, and whether it's immediate or, you know, prospective, six months, six years down the road. Thank you.
I think that, you know, the answer that I would give on that is, for me, the hybrid system is probably the most effective. I don't know whether Ben would agree with that or not, but it's the opportunity to extend fiber. We've identified the areas where, you know, they are less than, in that 25-meg range or less than 100. We can provide that information to the city. And I think that if we look at the hybrid option, most people, if you can get them into, you know, 100-meg range, that's adequate. The time to start running into trouble with that is when you have, you know, multiple family members plus somebody working at the home. I took a call from a gentleman that really, he said, this is one, kids were, he had three kids at school, he was working from home, and he said, it's a choice of whether I'm shutting down my Wi-Fi, my security, or he said, my security system, or I'm not working to allow my kids to go to school. But, you know, we've resolved that really with a hybrid system going into the subdivision he was in. But we can provide that information, I think, to the city.
We can. And a couple things that, I'm on the building technical side, that we see, important to get the word out, either through planning, building permits, and all that, make sure they know who to contact, whether it be the PUD. We'll provide pipe, we'll provide handholds, we'll do all that for folks that are building. And make sure they understand, we need to get this infrastructure in every time the dirt's getting turned. If we do that, the cost goes down substantially to get in there, cost of fibers come down, but we have to have that infrastructure in place. Otherwise, we come back and we do it, even Charter, whomever, they're in the same boat. It can be six to seven times more expensive to come back and fix the issue, rather than address it right up front. So, that's something immediate we can do. Make sure, if we need to provide information over here, make sure it's getting out. They can call the PUD. We work really good with all the folks here. Our engineers work with everyone on electrical every day. Get the word out, make sure we're getting infrastructure in. Make sure we're getting infrastructure in that is going to last for a decade, last for 15 years, makes the upgrades easy. So, when we want to go from 100 meg's to a gig, it's changing electronics, it's not changing the plant, i.e. fiber. For the hybrid system, we can change radios that are fed by fiber, as technology involves. It's important to get the infrastructure out there and get it, so it will last.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Serrano?
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I'll just follow up with two comments. One, I'm guessing based on some agenda items, we have a strong coalition of builders and other folks associated with home builders, listening to tonight's meeting. We know we at least received comments there. So, hopefully, they take that to heart, but also, you know, Mr. Director White, you know, if there's anything that your department ought to do, whether there's a flyer, a handout, or just something in a checklist of building permit application to ensure that those who are building in particular subdivisions or large projects. Quite frankly, I haven't looked at those checklists, but if it needs to be on there to contact PUD or Spectrum or whomever, I think that's a wise, quick response, where we could, as the gentleman said, move forward and build for the future. So, gentlemen, I appreciate this presentation, and hopefully, we've got some takeaways where we, as the city, can help our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano, and I echo those same sentiments, and I see Director White over here jotting down a bunch of notes, so hopefully, we can mitigate that. Anybody else? If not, then thank you very much for your presentation, and looking forward to...
All right. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
And thank you. All right. Next, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, and that's the Update American Rescue Plan Act. Director Recha.
Thank you, Mayor, and evening, council. We are discussing American Rescue Plan Act projects. I will just say ARPA, moving forward to save time, and give council a status on some of these projects. And we also appreciate any discussion and feedback on the list that we provided in the staff report, as well as anything that we might have missed, or you would like to expand upon or strike. Overall, we've had at least four programs. In the staff report itself, you'll see travel blog exchange program that has been completed in partnership with Visit Tri-City's Business Assistance Program, which is in progress. Applications opened on August 16th, and in almost a week, we've had 77 applications so far. For business owners watching this council meeting, I would like to encourage and remind them to apply, and they have three more weeks. The application, I believe, closes on the 15th of September. Similarly, utility assistance is also full swing. We've had the pleasure of working with Franklin PUD and Basin Disposal, Inc. As of today, we have allocated almost $600,000 of the million dollars that council had allocated for utility assistance between Franklin PUD and City of Pasco. City of Pasco customers, we've processed almost 800 applications so far. So, we're seeing great success there. Some of the other areas that we're working on is hiring of a community resource specialist. That process is in progress, as well as staffing a small business development center, which is also a partnership, a regional partnership. There are many other items that are a little bit larger and complicated. We just talked about broadband. We wanted to have an opportunity for council to ask the questions and see what you would like to guide, and I think we have gotten that answer today. We will be going back with Franklin PUD and looking through the details of the areas within the city that requires more infrastructure, and how much that will cost, and come back to you. But also, things like life safety, that are a little bit more complicated, and we have to work within the parameters of the grant and ensure that we will not run afoul of that. So, life safety, for example, would be a preservation program for high occupancy buildings that are struggling with the International Fire Code. And we are working with our legal team on qualifying program guidelines, and moving forward, we will come back to you when we have a little bit more outline to that program than we currently do. Similarly, Martin Luther King Center and Boys and Girls Club Building, they would be more of a capital projects, but definitely in line of the interests of the grant in terms of helping children, childcare, education, things like that. And we're looking at how much it would cost to fix the buildings for the Martin Luther King Center, as well as the building that the Boys and Girls Club is housed at. We also have some internal city projects, and as a finance director, I would like to highlight them as a Plan B. It is really critical that we have some good, solid Plan Bs, so that if we do not spend all of our grant allocation by 2024, that we have something that is more investment-heavy projects that we can quickly spend money on. The tricky part with federal funds are the fact that all of the projects essentially need to be federalized, as in there are certain rules. So, we just need to have a good Plan B, and when those projects get started, we need to be thinking about utilization of ARPA funds if we are at that point. And so, you have a more detailed list with some of my comments and some of our estimates. You will also find that the amounts, some of them have NA, which just means we have no idea at this time. But as we get a better idea in terms of getting cost estimates for the building, remodels, and expansions, things like that, we'll come back to you. With that, I'm open to any questions you may have.
Thank you, Director Recha. Council, any questions or comments?
This is Alvarado.
Yes, Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Signal, for just moving forward with this. Really impressed to see how the city's continuing to, you know, just put a lot of time into seeing how these funds could be allocated, and especially when it comes to federal funding, it becomes quickly messy and complicated, so I appreciate seeing this. I have a question about the position that would be created as a community resource specialist. Is that for a number of years, and also for a number of positions, or is it just one position?
At this time, it is just one position.
And for how long do we have this?
We would have grant funding for five years, and after that, we would have to make a decision on the need of the position for the city, and make decisions at that point.
Okay, perfect. That helps me out, just seeing the dollar amount, and I wanted to see how long that was, that dollar makes a little more sense, and we have some time to see if this position would be something that can become part of our regular business operations. I know we talked about different ideas around this even before the pandemic, so glad to see that. Maybe this creates an opportunity for us to have a position that does a lot more outreach. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. Director Recha, the business assistance programs that we have available now, I don't want to assume, I've seen where, if I'm not mistaken, they've been on our city Facebook page, I mean, we have communicated this to the public. Can you give me an idea about the different ways we've done that, just to make sure, I mean, because it just seems like somebody always comes back saying, well, we never knew about this, and you know, when it was started, so...
I can definitely say at this time that I am very grateful that we have an Economic Development Manager at this time, Mr. Gonzalez, and he has been out and about in the community and talking essentially face-to-face. We've discussed quite a bit in terms of what he does in a daily basis, and he's been leaving his cards in businesses and speaking with the business owners to ensure that they are aware of the program. We have also, like you mentioned, utilized Facebook, Twitter, all of our social media, it's on our website. The Pasco Chamber of Commerce is also using its resources to reach out to its bases, as well as other businesses that are not part of the membership. So, those are the things that we've done so far, and of course, more to come. I know Mr. Gonzalez has reached out to and has participated in various radio and television news segments as well.
All right. Well, I can sure appreciate all these different programs and the efforts we're making to get this out. It was time, and I appreciate all the efforts going into this. Any other questions or comments by council?
That's Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Martinez, and thank you, Director Signal, for your work on this. So, just really quickly, I did have a couple of questions, and maybe it's not time yet because it hasn't been fully vetted, but looking at number 11, Community Health Program, Chief Gear has submitted something for $5.5 million, and that's a large number, and I guess I don't know what that is. If it's not fully developed, and this will be coming in front of council for our better understanding later, but it's been fully vetted, I understand, and I'm certainly not applying pressure for that, but I'm interested in what that is, if we can share.
I'm sure I won't be able to speak fully on this. We do have Deputy Chief Dunbar here. We are looking at a full scope of mental health care, especially given some of the new regulations around policing as well. So, we've put this program in there, knowing full well that this is, as you mentioned, quite a big price tag, and so, we would have to partner with our regional partners, as well as some of the healthcare organizations very likely around us, to reduce that burden, maybe to the city just a little bit. And I think that the email that city manager, Zabel, sent this week or last week is very much in line with that thought of how expensive this program is going to be. And we're looking through that, through that whole process, to make sure that there is sustainability factor to it, and that we're also comprehensive in how we provide care. Did I cover that, Deputy Chief Dunbar? Does that answer your question, Councilmember Maloney?
I'm not sure I fully followed the breadcrumbs, but back to something I recognize in my email, so, but again, if someone could point it to me offline, but I appreciate a brief summary of what exactly the program would do, if I could get maybe three or four sentences on that.
I can take a shot. This is Deputy Chief Dunbar. So, right now, we're working on the... So right now, we're working on the premises that we would have a community health worker program that would staff an E M T or a paramedic with a mental health worker that would respond to nine one one emergencies. And then staff that, two of those units on a seven day a week basis. And with that, there's all the cost that comes with that as well as the ongoing labor cost. So, but this is to deal with those patients that we encounter that really don't have any place that can be addressed due to lack of facilities or those kind of things. So we're, we're trying to fill a hole. Chief Gear is working with City of Richland, City of Kennewick on the program as well. So there'll be much more information coming through on that. We provided a white paper to city manager Zabel to go over that, that kind of goes through that. So it's basically adding another response capability through our community risk reduction program, very similar to our Pasco Resource Navigator. But instead of doing it during normal business hours on a nine one one response timeframe. Hopefully that answers some of your questions.
That does. Thank you very much. Appreciate that and I look forward to seeing, seeing more on that. I just, I guess I didn't, didn't immediately follow with that, so, so thank you for explaining. So now I, I, I do understand enough at this point and look forward to you for the information.
Maloney is, you're actually, I'm on. The intent here is to provide a unit that deals with incidents that are not, have, don't have any violence related to them that P D does not necessarily respond to. And we get many of those and it would be a unit, an outreach unit that's on seven days a week for probably eight to ten hours a day in the afternoon to evening where the highest incidence calls. They would not be, people that would respond like to the violent calls that P D responds to. It, it was ones that we just need some mental behavioral health assistance fund. Our people do to, to talk to these people and help them decide whether they're going to go to a hospital or if there's anything we can do to help them and then refer them on over to the Resource Navigator program. And our cost allocation that's in there includes the Resource Navigator program through the five year period that, that is funded. So it would, it would be an all encompassing program. And the hope is it would be shared with Kennewick, Richland, uh, Ken- excuse me, Kennewick and Richland.
Great. Thank you so much. I, I know this is partially, very much a, you know, it's something that's important for our community and it's also in response to the new requirements by the state. So I, I get the, I understand. Thank you. I'm excited. I look forward to more of that and I appreciate, Chief, that, that you and your team are working on this.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney.
I, I do have one more question if, if I may.
Okay.
Director Signal, I'm looking at the item for job training. That was something I know we'd had some discussions about and I think we had, looking back at my notes, we had broad council support on this. And it looks like that one is, was rejected by C B C. Is that, in a nutshell, what's happened?
Uh, yes.
To that proposal thus far?
Uh, so far, I've been reaching out to a couple of other agencies, but I have not heard back from them so far. We have heard back from C B C and essentially all of their job training program are already funded by federal funds. And, and that was their response at this time.
Okay, great. Yeah, I appreciate looking out for some of the other ones. I know we have a strong union hall presence in, in the city. I don't know if any of those programs are essential, but we certainly know that construction workers are at a premium right now. This is so making sure that we have well trained people to, to support the development that's going on in Pasco is going to be really essential. So I look forward to any sort of trade programs that we can help support that may be outside the traditional community college program as well. So, thank you, Ms. Signal.
All right. Anyone else for questions or comments?
Yeah, this is Councilmember Serrano. I recognize that the dollar value here is about double what we're receiving. Have we found a way to allocate the other half of the funds? Or do you want us to try to project what we believe that the city's needs are? Or, or what's, what's the take here?
So if I could, good evening, council, Mayor, this is Dave Zabel. So I, I, I think that's a, I mean, that's a great question. I, I don't know that we need to start picking programs tonight. I think this is really more of an update. And I think we have a little bit of work, you know, for instance, is the, is the mental health response team? Is that a shared program among the cities? Is that five years, four years? What, what does that exactly look like for council? I think the chief and his staff have a pretty good idea what that looks like. We would need to kind of flesh that out along with other associated costs to make sure we have a complete cost to council in terms, in terms of housing equipment, those kind of things. There's other programs we're looking at. We need to make other contacts. It's really more of an update and if council feels like we're missing some ideas someplace. We certainly want to hear about that, but it was more to kind of share with you, I guess, the status of where we're at tonight.
Okay, there's not necessarily anything that strikes me as, you know, absent or, or entirely missing. I think, you know, from my perspective, obviously we want to make sure our residents are taking well care of. You know, you look at some of the behavioral health issues that we're talking about. Those are great programs, but we also, you know, we just heard from the P U D talking about how do you anticipate growth and, you know, be wise and smart in approaching that growth? How are you proactive? So I would also suggest there, if there's anything I see, you know, some of the actual like, the water treatment plant expansion and storage, I think those are phenomenal ideas. Certainly if we need to procure water rights or something like that, if that's doable, that might be wise. And then, then the other thing to consider is back to behavioral health comments. If we're looking at a shared resource pooled between either cities and counties, please, you know, just beat that pavement to say, hey, look, this is the cost. This is where we intend to house it. You know, if we're looking at housing, something like that here in Pasco, let's pulse the, either the community or, or wherever it's potentially residing to ensure that they support that. If it's going to go in Kennewick or Richland, let's, let's confirm that that's an appropriate location to their residents so that we're not too far down the road with a projected project. And we have to walk it back because it's not going to fly. And obviously the other key element being if we're waiting on other cities or other jurisdictions to fund it, let's confirm that their council's on board as well. I suspect you've done all that, but just kind of making sure we've got our checklist and homework ahead of us so that we don't plan a five million dollar facility with, with, you know, one and a quarter and then we got to figure out where the other three, seven, five comes. So thank you.
So if I, if I could just quickly respond to that, so thi- this is really more of a program than a facility. It's not necessarily to house folks that might be in distress, it's to be able to respond to incidents. So it's a, basically when I, when I mentioned housing, it was really more about where's the staff going to reside and the equipment for that staff going to reside? So they can respond to these incidents, then get them to the proper care facility.
I, I appreciate that.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I, I kind of took that away and I, maybe I was a little loose with what I said, but I think the bottom line is making sure, A, we've got financial support if we're doing cost sharing and B, whatever the program is, if, if there are direct or indirect impacts, let's ensure that, you know, it's, it's supported as well by the community.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Serrano. Well, thank you for that. If there's no further comments or questions, we'll move right along to the next item on the agenda. And the next one is the ordinance, the P M C Amendment, Street Connectivity. Director Riff White, do you want to kick us off with that, please?
I will. Very quickly, I'll introduce Jacob Gonzalez, our planning manager. He's been at this for some time now and has developed an abbreviated presentation from the one council received earlier, actually was, yeah, earlier this year.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here again this evening. Again, tonight's presentation is intended to provide council with an update on our progress to increase transportation access and mobility for the city of Pasco. You may recall that this item was first brought to your attention in March as part of the ongoing Transportation System Master Plan that should be wrapped up in the next month or so. And then we had a full on presentation at, on May tenth in front of council, which focused specifically on this issue. And again, as shown on this slide, staff would like to emphasize that this proposal, like any other proposed by staff, is intended to align and meet the goals and policies of the Pasco City Council. So this slide provides a brief summary of a few of them, including prior city council goals dating back to twenty ten and the twenty two Complete Streets Policy, our recently adopted comprehensive plan and obviously the Transportation System Master Plan that's in progress. So as part of the Pasco Goals in October of last year, they were adopted. And as a, as a guide for our city focusing on a variety of measures as shown on this screen, particularly with the community transportation network promoting a highly functional and multimodal transportation system through a variety of efforts, including collaboration with various transportation agencies such as Ben Franklin Transit or Washdott or the Council of Governments. And the utilization of policies, regulations that help support strategic investments in design of multimodal system for the benefit of access, efficiency and safety. So what, what is street connectivity? It's the degree to which transportation system provides access to destinations. We can sum that up by looking at the access, which is the quality of travel, connectivity, which is the directness of a particular route connecting origins and destinations, and mobility, so the ease of travel for moving goods, services, people, freight. And the United States Department of Transportation has come up with a variety of strategies that include short block lengths, intersection density, multimodal prioritization, safe and visible bicycle pedestrian facilities and a complete streets policy as measures to help increase transportation connectivity. Pasco has a complete streets policy. We have a bike ped master plan that was adopted in twenty eleven. And we made some efforts on the other three, but tho- those are severely lacking currently in the, the Pasco municipal code. So some of the connectivity benefits, they vary, but obviously transportation, distribution and efficiency. So the more connectivity, the more dispersed we can, our travel is more dispersed throughout a complete network that's connected to each other. The orderly development of utilities, since our utilities follow along those same corridors or routes, access for the entire community, safety, costs, we'll get into the cost a little bit later, the environmental equity and cost, I'm sorry, and safety aspects as well of connectivity. In fact, I wanted to point out that the state of Washington has put on a transportation efficient communities program. All of these are listed as, as benefits of a connected transportation benefit. And that program was supported by the Department of Commerce, the Department of Ecology, Department of Health and the Washington State Department of Transportation. This map, I know, I know council and others have seen this before, but this is one of the first maps that came out of the Transportation System Master Plan in the evaluation of our baseline conditions. They identified numerous safety issues with traffic on Burton Boulevard, Sylvester, West Court Street and the Lewis Street corridors. Obviously congested congestion on Road sixty eight, Burton Boulevard and along the U S three ninety five Sylvester and Lewis Street access points as well. You can see the map which tries to highlight where those occur in the city. So we took a look at intersection density, which is the measure of intersections by area. And this map, you can see the city broken out in some big geographies. Central Pasco has high levels of density for intersections. The one eighty two West Pasco area has lower levels of density with increased cul-de-sac frequency. And this gets to the point where many jurisdictions have tried to increase vulnerability by putting in place an intersection density ratio requirement on subdivisions. And while the intent is similar to what we're trying to do here this evening, the, the consequence of using just an intersection density is that not all intersections are created the same. Some lead to origins and destinations, others lead to dead ends and cul-de-sacs. And you can kind of see that break down as the cities develop northwest. And obviously east of Oregon now, it is a combination of characteristics as we have old historical development along with new developments within newer subdivision patterns in place. Here's a map that shows the existing conditions. This is block perimeter, so this is the length around an entire block. And again, you can see some of the higher reds, those are the longer or the, the larger block areas. And you can see the cul-de-sacs overlaid on top of them, similar to the map prior. Central Pasco has smaller block perimeters. There's also less cul-de-sacs per, per area. And that changes as you move further west. I want to point out the average residential block perimeter in Pasco is roughly twenty six hundred feet. Looking at where our schools are located here in the city, this is the walk score measure typically used for real estate, but is appropriate as well for measuring access for our public schools here in the city. Most of our schools fall well below the, the national average. Most of them fall below the tri cities, national, the tri city or regional average, about thirty six. We have schools as low as two, three, six and, and so on. But also if we were to overlay these on the, on the prior map, you can imagine places like Pasco High School obviously have higher connectivity, higher walk scores. Some of the newer schools have less access, therefore the less, or the lower score.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
Um, the newer schools, i- is the reason for that currently because the schools were placed there before the developments around it?
I think the only one that they, the only two that that may apply to would be the two that are on Road ninety and Burns Road. Those would have, those would certainly have less, lower walk scores. They also have increasing access challenges because of only the Burns Road access to them.
Okay, thank you.
Taking a look at the maximum block length and block perimeters across a variety of cities in the state of Washington. On the left, you have the block length. You can see that Pasco in purple has a one thousand three hundred and twenty foot block length that is significantly higher than many other jurisdictions, both larger and smaller than us. And on the right, you have the block perimeter, again, the length around the entire block, Pasco again in purple. Now, this is for the, all of the blocks in the city, so not just residential, but every block in the city. And again, Pasco has much higher numbers than the, than, than many other communities in the state of Washington. So we often talk about housing costs, but transportation cost is the second highest cost for any household across the country. So when we look at both housing and transportation out of the largest twenty cities in the state of Washington, Pasco's number ten. When we isolate that just for transportation, again, you can see Pasco in blue, that blue purple color. We have the third highest transportation cost as a percent of our total income in the state, at least for the twenty largest cities. Again, I'd point out that that's higher than larger cities in King County, in the Puget Sound area and elsewhere. I wanted to talk a little bit about the street pattern challenges that we face currently at the city of Pasco. The disconnected patterns have limited continuity of our public rights ways, our access. There is no predictability afforded to the city or developers as we seek to accommodate significant residential and commercial unemployment growth. This has now created challenges to developments that are adjacent to some of these areas. For instance, at the, prior to Pasco Hearn Examiner meetings, we've had some significant opposition to a potential development because of a lack of access to Road one hundred, specifically Bowflower. So it's becoming a, a problem for us today. It's also created problems for things as small as fence placements because our street grid system was supposed to be conducted in an organized pattern, but as we've deviated further and further, not only from best practices, but certainly from our own code, we now have residential problems where fences are located and they create safety issues as folks look to back in and out of their driveway or where their fences are placed because of the layout of their lots. I'd also mentioned that at the prior meeting in May, I had mentioned that the Road sixty eight Court Street project, the intersection project there may face some little challenges because of the lack of access outside of Road sixty eight and Court Street. There's only one road. So when that project does kick off, there will have to be some mitigation measures for folks to try to find another alternative route to the main arterial. And even over the past few months, as the city has long established planned growth along some of our major arterials, Sandifer, Burns Road, et cetera, we are finding challenges with permitting or allowing some of that growth because of the lack of access adjacent to where these, where these developments would occur. So this is something that we're facing today and is impacting current development. I wanted to point out some of the community input we received. This is from the Transportation System Master Plan outreach that was conducted in the spring of twenty twenty. On the left, you have, were folks in the community, I'm sorry, members of the community had indicated that there were sidewalk constraints. And also on the right, you see in purple where there were crosswalk, crossing and access constraints and barriers that residents have indicated were barriers for their transportation travels here in the community. Obviously, this depends on who. Uh obviously, this depends on who uh and how they are answering these surveys. Uh but we certainly did publicize it as much as we could. Uh but uh on these both, both of these maps, you can see the uh the significant um. Uh barriers that have been indicated to us along the newer developments in Pasco, particularly on the Road sixty eight, Sandifer, Burns, Argent and Road one hundred corridor. So this is an existing problem for the city. So we have a set of policy recommendations that were developed throughout the transportation system master plan to meet goals of the uh council and of our comprehensive plan. Uh some of these actually exist in our municipal code. These are just further clarifications of what we would expect. So there's a requirement for connectivity to abutting lands. Uh this uh also would require a future street plan, which uh would require an applicant to demonstrate that their proposal would not. Uh preclude development adjacent to them from having uh transportation access. And we've also uh uh recommended a change to the intersection spacing uh requirements. Right now, we have a hundred and twenty five feet. Uh we have uh changed that to uh be based on the ASHTO or the American Association of State Highway Transportation Officials guidance. So more of a safety concern for that particular uh recommendation. Uh we've also got some clarifying language for cul-de-sacs. And it our actual uh current code uh recommends that cul-de-sacs be no longer than four hundred feet. We would propose that that increases to six hundred feet, however, with some qualifier language. And again, non-motorized access ways, we have this already in our code. This just clarifies the requirement of how and when. Uh they would be uh required. So this was the Pasco Planning Commission's recommendation. This was recommended to council back in October of two thousand and twenty, so it's been quite some time. And uh the planning commission recommended this proposal out of four. So they received four proposals. This was the one that was recommended from them. Back uh that time last year. So they had recommended a block length of six hundred and sixty feet, a block perimeter of eighteen hundred and eighty feet for residential. Uh a uh same block length for the commercial districts with a twenty eight hundred foot uh block perimeter for commercial. To allow for larger big spot, big box retailers to certainly not have any uh um uh barriers for locating in the city. Uh we also uh du- uh created specific standards for the River View or West Pasco area, which we would define certainly as the area between Argent. Um and Court Street bound by the Columbia River um area. We would like to further refine that. As uh the area north of Argent has seen increased growth and has planned growth as well. You can see the intersection spacing table below. Uh plan unit developments would be exempt, multifamily units of twenty or more units would be exempt. Government, public and civic uses would be exempt, and you can see that qualifying language for cul-de-sac pathways. Uh whenever they are within one thousand three hundred and twenty feet of a planned public land use or facility. This is to increase our access within the community to places like our parks, our schools, our hos- our hospitals or public transportation facilities. I wanted to point out uh some of the support and collaboration that we've received on this proposal. Um I I specifically from the Washington State Department of Transportation, the Benton Franklin Council of Governments. Obviously, all of these agencies are important to us here in the community. Um as a whole, these agencies represent are responsible for quite a bit, uh whether it's tourism, uh non-motorized users. Uh emergency responses indicated by the Pasco Fire Department, public transportation. But with the Department of Transportation and Council of Governments, those are some of our biggest funding partners. We certainly get a lot of guidance and policy recommendations from them. And uh when we can align our local regulations with what they uh support. It certainly increases our chances of receiving additional grant funding when we've already uh proven that we've changed. Our standards to align with long-range practices. So it certainly increases the benefit we have when we're applying for potential grants. And we can look back and say, we've proven this, we've already made this change. In fact, I I'd like to read. Uh one of the comments we received from the Washington State Department, the Washington State Department of Transportation, October fifteenth of two thousand and twenty. Which was uh we applaud the city of Pasco's leadership and foresight to institute development regulations now to establish a resilient. And connected street networks so that future development will add to your community's transportation efficiency to avoid gridlock. And expensive future roadway expansion projects. With these new requirements, Pasco will be joining the ranks of leading cities across Washington who are making smart choices about their transportation decisions. And uh these regulations exist all across the country. They range uh from uh the big urban areas in Florida. Gainesville, college towns like Gainesville, Florida, uh rural areas in Nebraska, uh Little Rock, Arkansas. Uh obviously in Oregon, the Pacific Northwest, but we certainly would be one of the the few communities state of Washington to to make such a change like this. Staff uh is aware and we've shared that there has been some uh significant uh concerns and comments uh in oppo- opposing this proposal. Uh we've had three specific meetings uh with the Home Builders Association of the Tri-Cities. Uh in September and October of two thousand and twenty, we had a meeting with them here at City Hall Chambers a few weeks ago. Uh we've also met virtually with the Tri-City Association of Realtors to explain uh our proposal and the intent back in November of last year. Uh we've had numerous email uh and uh phone call conversations. And uh we meet monthly with uh the uh home builders and developer group uh on a monthly basis. Some of us even talk more regularly with with uh them as well. So we've certainly conducted or or had quite a bit of conversation about it. Uh their concerns have ranged from the limited outreach, uh the timing, uh what's their urgency, what's the need for this and the increased cost. Staff wants to acknowledge tho- those concerns. They're very, they're extremely valid, and anytime we're making a proposal that is of this magnitude. It's critical that we take into account all of the benefits and all of the consequences of a change uh that this could have. So uh after the May meeting with council, uh we were tasked with uh obviously increasing our communication with the the stakeholder groups. And so in that, in that effort, staff also created two additional alternatives in addition to what the planning commission had already recommended. And so you can see that uh second row in that uh pink color is the original pro- recommendation from the planning commission. Staff then created two sec, two additional alternatives. Uh the uh second alternative increased the block length and increased the block perimeter standards. We made a slight change to the connectivity to abutting lands. I I'd like to point out that at no point would staff ever require. An applicant to stub into an adjacent property. The uh planning commission recommendation was the dedication of right of way with a street stub within the property that was to be developed. Staff uh in both the alternatives would like to revise that slightly. Require the dedication of right of way, but with no improvements to see would come back at a later time to complete that connection at the time that it was appropriate. And you can see that on staff alternative number three, we've taken the a cue from a recent adoption from council. We uh now allow lot size averaging in the city. And so we would uh along that same way, follow a uh an average for citywide block lengths and block perimeters. Uh we believe that uh certainly the planning correct, planning commission recommendation is the most uh in line with council goals and policies. And best practices. We also believe that the two alternatives also uh meet those objectives. But uh the planning commission has not uh had the opportunity to see alternatives two or three. They voted on the uh first one you see there. So again, I wanna point back to the themes and obviously the benefits and impacts of our street connectivity proposal. Um the uh themes being how do we increase access, collaborate with our government and stakeholder agencies, connectivity, efficiency. Of our transportation network. And uh in identifying what the benefits and the impacts are, staff recognizes that this is a a pretty significant proposal before uh council. Um but these are things that have been recommended and have been pointed out to us uh for for many years now. So again, I want to point out that this, the the six hundred and sixty foot block lengths aren't anything new uh to communities in the country. Um in fact, in our own locally, uh we used to have much smaller block lengths than than that. So uh again, this was mainly just to update council on what staff has been up to and what we've created since our last meeting in May. And we would certainly appreciate any uh comments uh or address any questions from council and try to address them as best we can. I know that myself, along with other staff are also capable of answering some of these questions. So with that, all uh all this presentation is concluded from my end and then happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Appreciate this presentation. It's very well uh presented. Uh I'll let council start. Uh if council has any question or comment, I have a question, a couple of comments as well, but uh council.
Uh yes, this is uh Councilman Milney.
Yes, Mr. Milney.
Yeah, um after reading the the letter from the Home Builders Association, they were talking about like a cost of, I think, eighteen thousand per home. Uh looking, I mean, I really appreciate this presentation. Do you believe that that figure is correct or would it be for certain developments? Can you kind of get into what you actually believe would be the the higher costs if we were to implement this?
We we haven't received any um background information with regards to where that eighteen thousand dollar figure is derived from. Uh so I I wouldn't be able to accurately answer wh- whether that, whether that estimate is true or not. I would uh allude to uh believing that as a unofficial letter, but I don't have a specific answer on that.
Okay, will that be something we see down the line or uh as far as more concurrent numbers or do you have any idea on that?
Yeah, Mayor, if I could, uh yeah, so city manager is able again. So um you know, to answer your question, yeah, we were, as as uh our planning manager. Mentioned, we don't have the benefit of the calculations or what assumptions were made on that. I I I believe that was probably a calculation made on the planning commission recommendation. I don't know that that calculation or how much that may change with uh if you were to implement alternative two or alternative three. Uh that's certainly something we would, you know, we have, we have a concrete number, at least a proposed concrete number now by the Home Builders Association. We appreciate the opportunity to be able to sit down with them and and uh kind of walk through that. Look at the um, again, look at the assumptions and be able to verify that cost and share that with council. Certainly, the, you know, regulations, uh you know, eh there's a number of goals. Uh economics is also one of them, and you know, it's about finding a balance, you know, making a community safer, making uh. Connectivity work better, so you don't have cut through traffic and things like that uh with limited access. Uh but also there's a cost that comes with it and and that's something policymakers need to know and understand.
All right, well, thank you. Again, if just keep us informed, I'd appreciate it. Thank you about that.
Okay.
This is council, oh.
Go go ahead, Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor Martinez. Um and thank you, uh Mr. Gonzalez, for your, for your, your detailed additional dive into the the why. Um I know that for for me, eh you know, walking around my neighborhoods, um you know, over here, um east of twentieth. Um I got six different ways to get downtown, uh dozen different ways to, you know, get on the highways or freeways or get, you know, connect to where I need to. Um and of course, it's super pleasant to walk around, so it's interesting to see that put into um context with the other portions of the city. And and why, you know, my 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 girls uh walked to McGee, they walked to Roslyn Franklin, they walked to uh. Oh gosh, whatever, whatever the other elementary school over there is. Um so they 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 actually had to walk through some of those um that were, you know. Scored as very difficult walk, walkability and, you know, honest, honestly, yeah, it was, it was not um. Not near as straightforward as they now get to experience over here on in my side of town where, you know, it's it's very easy to get around. So um I I am interested and concerned, as uh Councilmember Milney said, about um understanding what the, what the true impact of cost is. That is something that we, we of course need to balance. But um ultimately, I guess, where where my perspective comes in on this is. I know how how much I love the walkability of the area where I live. Um it is a great quality of life, it's easy to get to restaurants, businesses, um grocery stores, uh to walk downtown, even just taking a walk around. I get to take, walk past all sorts of different houses and beautiful, you know, gardens and homes um that, you know, I I s- I couldn't do. When I lived over in the western part of town. So um I guess what I would, I'd be very, I'd be very supportive of these alternatives going back to the planning commission to dig in deeper into those numbers. Uh I don't think it's fair for us to, you know, overrule a uh our volunteer appointees that that spent, oh gosh, over well over a year. Looking at this um without them, you know, getting a chance to to dig a little deeper into some of these questions, concerns that have been raised. That by council members as well as the community in terms of of the viability of this and what this means. So um in general, um I I, you know, I think we need to move forward on something. Um but I would be, I'd be interested in more work being done at the planning commission level and giving them that that working body and an opportunity to. To dig a little deeper on some of these issues before it comes back in front of us. So I guess that's where where I stand on this, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney, and I would like to echo some of the things that you that you said, and I don't want to repeat them for the sake of time here tonight. About balance and going back to the planning commission and and maybe revising this. But as I was reading through the packet and I was reading the letters from uh the Home Home Builders Association, and I'd like to preface before saying that. Is, you know, I I commend the council and uh the work that the council did for this goal of connectivity. I would be irresponsible for us not to um not to ask and 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 make our cities better uh by. By doing exactly all the hard work you're providing uh here today, cause I know this, this has been a lot uh, a lot, a lot of uh. Moving parts in in this work that you guys are doing. Uh but what I've noticed is the recommendations do- don't even, and I'm and I'm not taking sides at this point, but the reg- and and I'm talking about the balance. Uh the recommendations don't even uh come close to what the letters are insinuating or uh recommending from the development side. And that's what I would like to see is a little bit more collaboration from both sides to come to an agreement. Um i- is there, wh- what in, how are you guys receiving the input from the development, uh the stakeholders, if you will? To uh to implement and get the best product we can, because at at the end of the day. Um everything seems to be okay except for really the, how much this is gonna cost extra, you know, and and for wanting to. Have more affordable housing and uh and just keep it down as much as we can. Uh what, what have we done to work with the development group to come to a consensus?
Eh eh yeah, I can go ahead and try to to answer that and and anyone else feel free to to add some uh supplement to this. Uh we, we had six public hearings at the planning commission meeting. Uh this originally started on December twenty uh eighteen. Uh with the planning commission meeting, so we've been working on this, I'm sorry, December twenty nineteen with the planning commission meeting, and there were six public hearings. I would estimate that there's a couple hours worth of comments that the planning commission heard. And on the uh the date of the uh recommendation on October twenty, two thousand and twenty, one of the uh specific comments from one of the planning commission commissioners was that. Uh they did not receive any language that they could codify. That would either align or attempt to align with the Pasco municipal codes. Uh I'm sorry, the Pasco City Council goals are comprehensive plan policies. Uh and at that point, planning commission made their recommendation. We've met several times after. Uh via our monthly meetings uh with the uh Home Builders Association and other stakeholder groups, a part of that group, the development community as well. So from our perspective, we we've uh reached out a variety of times. We've tried to uh encourage participation. Specifically encourage the receipt of specific uh numerical values in which we could turn into a pro- uh proposal for council to uh discuss. And unfortunately, we have not received anything that has allowed us to do that. I I also want to add, because so much of the comments have been on the housing affordability or affordable housing challenges that this, this region. And obviously, our city is facing, that Pasco was one of a handful of cities uh east of the Cascades. I believe there's only three actually. That applied for and received and moved forward with both Houseble- Houseble nineteen twenty three and Houseble fourteen oh six uh funding opportunities. Uh to increase residential capacity, to address our housing challenges. Uh our housing action plan is set to kick off for the next few weeks. We are working with the Department of Commerce to apply for additional funding to supplement that effort. I would also mention that uh uh we've reviewed numerous housing action plans and housing policies. Not a single one has recommended that circuitous meandering and cul-de-sacs were in uh benefit to affordable housing. In fact, I had mentioned at the May tenth uh council meeting that uh the White House in late two thousand and sixteen published a toolkit on affordable housing. Incentives and had referenced that increasing multimodal transportation access for communities as a whole was a benefit. To households because, again, transportation is the second highest cost for any household. So a- again, would reiterate that we, we, we have uh reached out. Uh we would appreciate additional conversations, certainly. Uh in the hopes to receive um something that we could codify and and come back to the planning commission and council. That uh aligns with uh the uh council goals and 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 certainly best practices. I I would refer back to the support and collaboration page. There's a reason why Wash Dot and other agencies have supported this effort.
Okay, thank you. Look, uh city manager Dave Zabel. Uh thank you, Mayor. So this council kind of begin, or this uh issue kind of begins with the council and it's gonna end with the council. It began with the council uh when that goal got into your goal statement. And uh that goal made its way into your goal statement, because you looked at the round, looked around at the result of what our current regulations allow. And decided you didn't like that. You you needed, it need, there needed to be some correction. That's what, that's what sent us on this path. And there's been, there's been a lot that's happened in between. And ultimately, when we bring a final regulation back to you or a set of regulations new in the form of an ordinance to you. Uh council's gonna have the final say on it, but um I think taking it back down at this point, given we've had the input we've had. Uh certainly, some of it could have been. certainly, some of it could have been earlier and, you know, it it's, I I don't really view it as a setback, because I think if it gets us a a solution that is more acceptable to everyone and they understand it better, I think that's helpful. I think to get there, though, the folks we're talking to need to understand that no is not an option. Just saying no is not an option, because council's already decided in their goals. Now, if we want to change the goal, council's certainly will certainly able to to change your goal and say, you know what, after all, connectivity is good the way it is. I mean, that's that's the other option we could look at. I don't think we're there, and I'm not proposing that. But I think to get anybody to bargain and and not bargain, but collaborate with us, they're going to have to understand that just continuing to say no is not going to bring us to a a point where we can all agree on something and bring a recommendation back to council.
Sure. And I can appreciate that, City Manager Dave Zabel. And I'm not an engineer, and, you know, we're we're just taking all the information that I'm gathering from from both sides and and trying to to make something of it, because in some ways, I'm a little bit confused that if we put more streets, which maybe is the right thing to do, I'm not saying it's not, but if you put more streets, you have less houses and developments. And then, you know, that that's just the way that my common sense works. But I know there's got to be a happy medium, and and I guess I'm just requesting that this time, you know, as we have discussed, let's take it back, let's take, give it one more shot, see what we can come up with, but and 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 I know it's it's not going to be perfect, but we want to get to the place where we can leave it and know that we're going to have better connectivity in the future here in the city of Pasco. So thank you very much for that.
So unless there's objection from council, I I think the next place for this issue to go is to the Planning Commission. Staff, and I can assure you, will be working with the Home Builders Association and anyone else that wants to have input into this topic. I I think it's much more transparent if we do it that way. And that that gives everybody an opportunity to look at than to bring proposals the Planning Commission hasn't looked at or to have an outside proposal come in at the last minute to counsel from one interest group, I think would be difficult for for many in the community to accept. So I think this this really creates the transparency council's looking for, also one of your goals. And and allows for, I think, a a process that I I think should result in some better collaboration than what we've seen today.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, and David, thank you for this detailed presentation. I really enjoyed the way you described it, because it was really helpful for me tonight, and I and I trust that it was the same for the rest of the council members. I'll give it one more opportunity for council, since I can't see you. Any any other questions, comments before we go to the next topic?
Yeah, this is Councilman Serrano. I just want to kind of rehash what what we've heard. The presentation, the bulk of it is, as I recall, about the same as the first we've heard, but now we're looking at two different options. The staff alternatives two and three. Is that the gist of 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 this entire presentation? That we're now looking at two new alternatives, or was there something else in there that I somehow glossed over?
The the two additional alternatives were developed to help foster some collaboration with some of the stakeholder groups. We we didn't receive much in return, but however, as City Manager Zabel mentioned, it it would be worth taking back to the Planning Commission to have a full evaluation of of what they adopted or recommended last October, along with the recent staff alternatives that were shared with you this this evening.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure, because, you know, again, and looking at the presentation, it looked pretty similar. I I keyed in on, as you discussed, those those differences and kind of the base. I just wanted to make sure, was there anything else that the Home Builders Association or or anyone, quite frankly, at this point, has has proposed that seemed really substantive that we have yet to incorporate? Because I'd hate to send it back to Planning Commission and then, you know, we get some, obviously, we got the letter from the Home Builders Association, but I guess is there any glaring issue or anything substantive that ought to be considered prior to this going back to the Planning Commission?
Yeah, I I don't believe there was. The only thing I I think that we've got was any specificity was the eighteen thousand dollar per lot increase. I think, you know, that's something that's certainly a consideration. And there and there there's a possibility there'll be a another alternative. I mean, as we work through the the Planning Commission process and and we meet with stakeholders, whether that's home builders or or other stakeholders, bike, pet people, what have you, there's a, there's always room for for more than just the three proposals you have in front of you, and and we'll see what the preferred alternatives that come out of the Planning Commission are.
Okay, great. I appreciate that. I just, like I said, I I didn't want to, if HBA or whoever offered some other substantive thought and we didn't go back to it, I'd be remiss to send this back to Planning Commission knowing they're going to challenge me, right, or offer something. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Serrano, and once again, thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Appreciate it. All right, thank you for that, City Manager Dave Zabel as well.
I see a note that that Ruben Alvarado was trying to say something, but it was all garbled, so I don't know if
Oh, yeah, you know, I thought I thought that was just like a feedback from from us talking.
He's watching Charlie Brown, and he's a teacher, but yeah, Ruben, we cannot hear you if you're trying to make a comment, buddy.
No, just, I was saving my comments, and I think I'll 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 do that. I just appreciate the presentation. But I certainly do echo the sentiment of, you know, a, this is something that came about through a process, through looking at what the community wanted to see and bringing that towards council goals. I mean, that that is a pretty significant process and that that I certainly want to honor. And, you know, yeah, there there may be different stakeholders, but I think ultimately for me, it really comes down to what the residents of the city of Pasco want to see. So just wanted to say that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. All right, so we have several more items to go through tonight. We'll just move right along. The next item on the agenda is impacts of COVID nineteen on the Pasco Fire Department. Mr. Dumbbor, is that you or Chief Gear tonight?
Uh, it's going to be me unless Chief Gear, if he's still on the line. He's on a area command team dealing with multiple wildfires. So I don't know if he's got anything to say. I'll give him a second if he wants to to chime in.
He'd rather fight fires than being here?
I think that goes without saying.
Chief Bar, go ahead.
Okay, thanks, chief. Hopefully, you can get to bed early tonight. So we were asked just to quickly give a little bit of an update on the COVID nineteen impacts on Pasco Fire. As well, you know, we've been battling this pandemic since early January of twenty twenty twenty. It actually started in other areas in nineteen, which is, i.e. the COVID nineteen portion of it. And it's been pretty significant impact on on our day-to-day operations with everything that we've done up to and including doing many community activities to support testing, vaccinations, sites, those kind of things. So we're just going to quickly go through this, because I know we've got plenty of of other things on the agenda. So one of the first things that we have is we we addressed the high transmissibility and the contagiousness of the disease through increased use of PPE, Personal Protective Equipment, an acronym that now the entire nation knows instead of just those of us in public safety and or construction. So that's the first thing. We changed many of our procedures to address how we were going to deal with patients, transporting them, how we deal with them on the way, how we deal with interaction with the hospital, and then how to clean up after transporting them and per- performing certain procedures in order to address the medical concerns of the patients. Based on that, and the longer the increased use of PPE, the decontamination, it has actually taken longer for us to respond to calls, because we have to put on extra stuff. When we transport a COVID positive patient, we have decontamination, we have to do of our personnel, the equipment, the apparatus, and even to that point, the station. We were actually cleaning the stations regularly for about two hours every shift at the very beginning, because we didn't know what was going on. So that's, all of that kind of contributed to, we were staying busy. It worked out okay, and I'll go on in that a little bit. Our our call volume went down a little bit at the very beginning, but as you can see here in a bit, it actually went back up. When we did the decontamination of those COVID positive patients in our ambulances, it actually took a longer to decontaminate it, which means longer out-of-service time, which results in other stations covering that primary station's area, which longer response times, therefore longer out-of-service times. So truly, we were seeing a decreased service to our our customers. And that was reflected in our performance report this year with a little bit of the longer response time and those kind of things. So with that, that all increased our costs. I won't go into that much. We've already heard several of those impacts through Director Sigdell's reports throughout the couple of years. Our exposure to our personnel, we we did have so far to date, out of our eighty-seven personnel that we employ in the fire service, seventeen of them have tested positive at what point in time since the beginning of the pandemic. Fortunately, none of them have had life-altering effects from that. In fact, right now, we've got three that are out, that are COVID positive, even though a couple of them have had their vaccination. So we're seeing some of the breakthrough even on that. So we're at about twenty percent, and looking at across the board, other fire agencies across the nation, that's about normal. We have seen some other agencies that have tested a little bit higher. But that's kind of where that's at. The fourteen hundred and sixty-nine contacts to date, that's basically one of the things that we changed our reporting system to capture. Was the call COVID-related or not? If it was, then what we identified was that's documentation that we did for our personnel, so we could track that in the future. So to date, we've had fourteen hundred and sixty-nine contacts. That means that if they had positive or presumed positive, we added that to the list, which in the whole scheme of things, it's a fairly small number, but it's still quite a few. And to only have seventeen personnel contract COVID from that, understanding that they don't spend their entire life here at the fire station or serving the city of Pasco, that's not a bad relation. So our our use of our contamin- or decontamination processes and the PPE has actually done us fairly well. There is currently a United States Fire Administration study that's going on based on that data that we're contributing to as other departments on how do we build resilience and do best practices for our firefighters, first responders, to kind of help us maintain that the physical and mental resilience as we continue to to battle this pandemic moving forward. Which is the next point there. We we have seen many mental and physical impacts to staff. We continually deal with an unknown disease that's highly transmissible. Ask anybody and you'll get thirteen different decisions on what this is going to do. We don't know. We've seen a lot of the arguments of of all the different things. The variants that continue to evolve, I mean, we're dealt dealing right now with the Delta variant. There's a Lambda variant out there. We don't know what that's going to bring. So the the constant evolving and what works and what doesn't is always a challenge. It 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 stresses our folks out when they come to work and have issues about they don't know exactly what's going to happen with this disease. Fire is pretty easy. You put wet stuff on the red stuff, the fire goes out, you clean up, you pick your hose, you go home, take a shower. This one is, you put your PPE on, you clean up, you go home, take a shower, and you hope that something else bad doesn't happen to you, and you continue to do your job. The future health effects of those that have tested positive is still up in the air. There's a whole bunch of studies that, from minor effects to life-altering effects. Now, as I said, so far to date, we haven't had any of our employees have significant impacts to date, but we just don't know. With that, the more people that we get exposed, they have to go in quarantine, not work, take time off of work. It's becoming more and more difficult to backfill the open positions. We have nineteen positions we have to fill every day to meet our minimum staffing. And when we have more people out than we have positions because of sick, their family's sick, those kind of things, or they just need a break, we're having trouble staffing some of those positions. And we do what we call force hire, where we force somebody to actually stay at work and don't let them go home to fill one of those nineteen positions. And that kind of leads into, you have a guy who's been here for forty-eight hours, and now you make him work another twenty-four. It kind of wears on you. So we have some issues there. I already talked about the USFA researching the emphasis on what's developing that resilience. So that's just kind of an ongoing battle to see where that goes in the future. Right now, actually, this morning, we had a meeting with the hospitals, emergency management staff and fire departments to talk about our hospital status. Right now, they are heavily overloaded. They are also experiencing high levels of stress and overwork. It's very hard work. It's tedious work. We're not able to always get a patient to the hospital they prefer to go to. And that's just because of the high patient load. So, and it's not necessarily because they're always out of beds, it's because they may not have the staff to deal and and handle that patient. And so we're looking at options to use other facilities, those kind of things as we go. But again, it comes back to getting the staff to actually take care of the patients. It is kind of tricky. So more to come on on that one. It's also a little frustrating when you go in to transport somebody and you don't know which hospital you're going to go to. So it does make a little uncertainty and a little bit extra stress on there. Quick look at our call volume. That top line is actually this year's calls per day. So we're averaging right now about twenty-one calls a day. When I started here, when the green line was, we were running about sixteen calls a day. So we've seen a significant impact. The red line in the middle was two thousand twenty. You can see where we'd actually dropped off for the first couple of months of the pandemic. There wasn't a lot of traffic. People were staying home. They didn't know what was going on. We didn't have a lot of the other outside activities happening. But then we started to pick things up and move along, and you can see the 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 peak towards the July-August timeframe, and that's about where we're at right now. And updating that, the top line today, instead of it angling down, it's actually leveled off. We actually, the last, actually, the last twenty-four hour period, we've run thirty-one calls, which is almost double what we would normally do. So with that, how's our ambulance transports doing? Little bit busy with a chart here. The top one is our, the the one that doesn't go throughout the entire year is the current year, twenty twenty-one. The blue is twenty twenty. The yellow is kind of a baseline of where we were at in twenty nineteen. Again, you can see in that April-May timeframe, we actually dropped down and weren't transporting that many patients because everybody was staying home. We weren't going to as many car crashes, those kind of things, lots of less outside activities. But then we picked right back up to where we were, and then you can see at the end of twenty twenty that steep increase right into the beginning of twenty twenty-one, and we've kind of maintained that high level all the way up through now. I did not put August on here, because we're only halfway through the month. And but right now, we're about half of where we're at, a hundred and sixty-seven transports. Seventy-one of those are COVID-related, which translates to about forty-three percent, which is hanging right about where we've been since July of last year. We've had as high as fifty-three percent of our transports COVID or COVID-like symptoms that we transported. And you can see that in the bottom lines, the orange, blue, and green. The orange is the twenty twenty transports. You can see we kind of peaked out in that July-August timeframe. But then, when the cold weather came back around, we started to peak up again. This year, we've actually dropped down a little bit. We, I'm assuming it could be related to the vaccines or people just staying home, not wanting transport. But you can see that we've done some different things to address that. The seventy-one transports, again, is only through part of August. I anticipate it being right back up higher as to what it was for last month, just like it is this for August. One of the things, the other two bottom, the gray line and the green line at the bottom, are those the ones that we've, they're COVID or COVID-like positive. And we've actually not transported them. We've given them ideas about staying home and taking care of themselves if they're stable, so as not to overload the hospitals. Got to hit the right button here. Community actions, I already mentioned quickly, the CBC test site. I'll show a back, a a picture here of our our test numbers in a little bit. But you can see we've spent quite a bit of number of hours supporting that with our on-duty staff. That does not count all the contractor staff that are actually out there running that site. And then, of course, when they did the Kennewick Mass Vaccination Site, Chief Gear helped stand that up, and we've supported that throughout January through May and delivered just under, just over eighty-one thousand doses to our community. and delivered just under, just over eighty-one thousand doses uh to our community. And you can see that we did quite a bit of regular hours and overtime hours, just of our staff on that as well. So those were two of the big factors that we had uh moving forward. CBC Test Site, just a quick snapshot from the beginning of May. And those are weeks at the bottom, so you have May, June, July, August. We were actually trending down. Things were looking good. And in the last uh three to four weeks, our site has actually really picked up again. In fact, our, we actually set a new record and sent, tested one thousand ninety-one people on a single day. They actually did eight hundred and eighty-two today. So the August week thirty-four spike is almost catch caught up to last week's spike as well for that. And we're running about twenty-five percent positive on that for right now. So the last piece that I want to talk about, and this is the one that's uh kind of affecting us immediately right now, is the governor announced with the Department of Health that all healthcare workers be fully vaccinated by October eighteenth of two thousand twenty-one. And we're coming up on that date. Our firefighters and medics fall within that uh requirement. Right now, we've got seventy-three and a half percent of our firefighters that are vaccinated. We started doing it all the way back in January of two thousand twenty-one. In fact, I went to Cadlec on the morning and got it, and the worst I ever had was a sore arm. So um which was the 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 same type of effects that other firefighters have seen. Right now, we have twenty-three personnel that have not been vaccinated that we are working with uh to see what we're gonna do with them as we move forward to meet that October six- or October eighteenth deadline. There are some uh religious and medical exemptions that can be taken advantage of and HR and legal and administrative, the city manager's offices, working with Chief Gear to work through that um as we move forward. So but we'll, that's kind of where we're at with everything. So we'll see where this vaccination uh. And that raid, I actually was talking with Kennewick and Walla Walla this morning at a meeting. They are also about seventy percent vaccinated and have the same concerns that we do about the other twenty, twenty-five percent of non-vaccinated personnel. What's that gonna do to us if they decide not to move forward and we lose staff? So with that, I'll be happy to attempt to ask or answer any questions.
Thank you for that, for that presentation, Mr. Dunbar. Any questions or comments from council? Well, if not, I can just uh, I appreciate the information.
This is Councilmember Maloney, sorry, I apologize for that, my, I was double muted.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Martinez, I'll be very quick. Uh thank, thank you, Chief uh Dunbar for for the presentation. Is there something that we as council can do to help? Obviously, the vaccine mandate's not within our control, that's a, that's driven by state, it's not something the city is imposing. How could we help this? I I feel deeply for firefighters and and the additional stress and work they're they're going through and those additional uncertainties. So can we do something?
Just continue your support that you've given us. We really appreciate it. And I'm sure we'll come back with some sort of budget ask or something along that line for no other reason than we have an opportunity. So I know Recha doesn't like that answer, neither does City Manager Zabel, but I'm sure, you know, we fight fires and things with money. So I'm sure there will be, but your continued support and of our personnel is appreciated.
I guess I'd offer that, um certainly, the 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 main purpose of the ARPA funding is to help us get through the rest of this, um you know, pandemic. And I can't imagine somewhere better to spend some of the money than to make sure that we're, you know, adequately addressing any of our fire department's needs. So I certainly have my support, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. And yeah, i- in many cases, you know, money can't solve a problem if there's not enough qualified people, you know, to do the work. So we feel, we feel the the pressure, the concern, and we're just hoping that somehow we make it work at the end, right? I mean, let's just see where it goes and uh and just know that we'll do everything we can to 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 make it happen.
Yep, continue to work together as a team.
Thank you, Mr. Dunbar.
Thank you.
Yeah, ju- just to note that our our main goal tonight was just to make council aware of some of the challenges that the department's been facing and and the impact on the personnel and and uh my hat's off to them. But I don't, I don't think the public's really seen a diminishment in uh uh service or service levels. That's to the credit of the chief, uh the deputy chiefs, the department members. But it also is taking its toll on them. They're they're tired and I think we're all like us, most of us ready for this to be over with, but we have ways to go.
Thank you, Mr. Zabel. All right, with that, uh we'll move right along uh to National Community Survey, uh City Manager Dave Zabel, again.
Okay, so council is uh pretty well aware of this for the most part, but for the benefit of the public. This is something council's been doing since two thousand and five. And what National Community Survey is, is a, is a statistically valid and standardized survey of a, basically a random sample of Pasco residents. Historically, we've used the National Research Center to conduct uh what they call the National Community Survey. And that survey consists of standardized questions in a number of different service areas. A lot of city services, but also schools. And and then there's also non-service, uh uh at least not direct service questions about, do you feel safe in your neighborhood? Do you feel safe in your community? You know, those kind of things that kind of get a sense of where the public is. And I'll note that the surveys, it has changed with the times. It's standardized, which has been, is great for us because it allows us to kind of see our progress as the years go on or the impact of county, excuse me, uh the city council uh policy, direction, and decisions. But um it'll, it's also changed over time to kind of reflect the change in uh society or the change in our community or technology or those type of things. So the information uh councils derive from this survey, and particularly now that we have the depth that we do with a number of different cycles in it, uh has been, proved to be a pretty valuable tool for council in their goal-setting efforts and which has to do with the timing of this uh, uh of this particular effort. We we conducted on the odd, towards the end of the odd year, so that when we have our uh biennial election, then new council members uh take place. They have the benefit of that information, the the returning council members or the the ones that are only midterm uh have that benefit. And as a new council, you know, with the, with any new members, they have a fresh start on how they might update goals or add goals or or change goals. So uh I'll note that uh I think two thousand eighteen, we had five new council members that got to see this for the first time. And then last time, as we will this time, in two thousand twenty, we had one new council member. But just even having one new person, uh plus two years of experience more for everyone else on the, on the old goal set, there's, there's a lot of reasons to take a look at goals. So uh typically, there's uh beyond the survey questions themselves, there's specific questions the council can a- can ask. So they, they can ask three different policy questions without an additional cost. The council has taken advantage of that and included in the attachment is a listing of all the supplemental questions uh and results dating back to two thousand and five. So I think those are kind of helpful because uh I thi- I think, I want to say we've asked about recycling three times and pretty much got the same answer all three times. So the city, I I just mentioned that uh it's a, it's a valid uh random sample, taken mostly from our utility uh information, utility customer information. But there's also an online option for folks to to be able to use, utilize that as well in case they want to participate. And we've, we've actually, the two years now, or the two cycles that that's been uh offered, that's been pretty popular, you've usually had right around three hundred additional respondents to that. Interestingly enough, I think both cycles that that's happened, the the online, which is not randomized, is self-selected, has pretty much been in line with what the statistically valid survey has been in terms of responses. Particularly around the, on the questions, maybe not quite the same on the policy questions, but on the, on the uh service questions. So the survey uh funding, council's already provided for that in the budget. And so we would propose to move forward with that. But we did have three policy topics for consideration. Certainly, we're hopeful that council may have additional that you want us to consider. And talk about those in a minute. But basically, these, these are kind of tagged on to the end and everybody, we have an opportunity to to at, to ask the um folks participating in the survey uh these three questions. So some of the items that have been out there that that we've seen maybe a little bit of controversy around, uh where maybe as a city, we haven't had a opportunity to talk about in terms of goals or or other things, is the the issue of short-term rentals, like Airbnb and and uh those type of rentals. Industries uh for the recruitment, for the city to recruit, uh maybe help fine-tune our economic development goals by um, you know, there may, there may be an interest in the public on certain focus, for certain industries that they would want us to focus on. And then mental health's also been an issue as well. And uh as council, we've discussed previously, we've, we've had some uh discussion on the one-tenth of one percent sales tax for mental health and uh thought that might be something council might consider asking. These aren't necessarily recommendations, they're really just more conversation starters based on some conversations we've had and uh and I, issues that have sort of arisen, like the short-term rental, that we really have an opportunity for council to to dig into. So with that, I would just open it up uh to get council's feedback on those and any other items they'd want us to work on. I I would anticipate from a timing standpoint, we would be back at your next workshop with some sample questions on the areas that council identifies an interest in, whether it's these three or if they have, have a couple more. We can, we can, we can uh work in, you know, at this point, in more than just uh three questions. We could work on four or five questions, maybe six, and then narrow that down to the three uh in September. Ultimate goal is, we need to have this pretty well wrapped up by the end of September in order to meet the timeline for the survey information to be available for council. They'll do the surveys, they'll start preparing that survey in in November and get it out, or excuse me, in October and get it out in November, compile results in December and so forth. So we should have it ready right at the begin, certainly after the beginning of the year. I think typically, late January, early February.
Thank you, uh Dave, uh Mr. Manager Dave Zabel. One of the things, you and I had a topic on before, another one that could uh be of interest is the community's stance on ATVs, the regulations from the city of Pasco. Uh that was another one. And um these surveys have, have been real good for me in the aspect of, you know, I have my own opinion about certain things, but these surveys really help, help me take a step back and say, okay, this is, this is my opinion, but uh what does the community say about this? And this is where the survey really comes in handy and uh gives us a different perspective. But uh yeah, that was another topic that we had discussed that I would, I would uh make a suggestion of maybe asking a question on that, on that topic. Council, any input?
Oh, it's Councilmember Maloney, I'll ring if no one else will, but I'll happy to defer to someone else if they've got a thought first. Is that Mr. Alvarado?
Uh sure, I, I, go he- go ahead, Craig.
Oh, all right. So I was gonna say that um one of the things that we're probably overdue for asking the, the community about is asking about the, you know, allowing the private sale of uh of marijuana in the city. Certainly, we know that challenge, that, you know, the stance on that has changed nationwide. A few research centers did a survey back in April and found over sixty percent nationwide of people that are, support the recreational legalization of marijuana. So um and over, I think it was total of ninety-one percent that that supports some version of legalization of marijuana. So we know the times have changed a lot. And I think it'd be worth it to, it'd be helpful to you, to ask our residents um where where they stand for it. So um, you know, supporting a private business, you know, private rights of business owners and simply the fact is that it's here, people are using it, people are going across the the river and and buying it in Proster and Finley and bringing it back to their houses here. So, you know, the use is here, so uh we're not getting any of the uh, you know, tax benefits to help, you know, police or regulate any, any outcome of that. So uh I'd certainly recommend that council looks at that. And I'd use that to probably replace the industry recruitment. We've got the Somos Pasco effort that was done a few years ago that I think gave us some really good leads on what industries to look at, as well as the My Try Two Thousand Thirty effort. I think we've got a lot of regional economic development work that's being done focused in that area. And I I don't think us asking our general population is going to, you know, provide us real actionable information as opposed to the business leaders in our community. So that's what I'd recommend as a, as a, as a offering up. And I would recommend that, again, that that question perhaps be, uh the industry question be uh next, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Maloney. Councilmember Alvarado?
Yes, uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. And um, yeah, I think uh one of the, one of the conversations that I think would be really important to have is to have a more robust conversation around uh affordable housing and more specifically um with some of the funding or or opportunities that we have from the state with uh some recent uh legislation. If there's any kind of uh uh opportunities for incentives for affordable housing developers or things of that nature that uh do provide true affordable housing that's uh tax-based, um you know, based on income, things of that nature. I I I just, I don't know if uh this would be the right time to ask, but I think the uh, it might, it might just open a door for some good, robust com- uh community conversation.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. Okay.
This is Mayor Por Tembara House?
Yes, Mayor Por Tembara House.
I'd just like to echo the same sentiments as uh fellow councilmembers Alvarado and Maloney in regards to housing affordability and accessibility. And the um issue, I, I was looking at the survey. It shows uh two hundred, if I'm not mistaken, two hundred and seven responses. Is this an ongoing survey? And how, uh, you know, look, looking at the surveys, it's done about every two years, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and so again, going back to my question, two hundred and seven responses is um, you know, not enough data from our community, from our city. And so I wonder if we're doing any other efforts to uh, you know, in hopes to get better results for these surveys? I mean, it's direct response from the city uh so that we can make those changes. Like I said, I, I, I'm in support of the previous comments and uh again, in support of the, looking into how we can uh address the issue with marijuana and maybe continue the survey uh to get more responses and get, get a better idea. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Por Tembara House. Yes.
Now, Mayor, I, I will note to the council that, you know, so this is, this is one uh approach in which to get information. Another approach we utilize is we conduct um, I think the, historically, we've conducted three uh community listening sessions. One with the business community, then two with the residential uh community at large uh throughout the city. Those usually get garner, I mean, it depends, just thinking back over the three that I've been involved in, probably about fifty each, with the business one being around sixty, eighty or so. So that, that gets you another hundred and fifty to two hundred folks that have an opportunity to kind of weigh in. And uh that's more, probably one more about reading the crowd or or um taking questions and kind of seeing what's on the minds of of the group. You know, and and as council, what, this, uh a number of the council have participated, at least in the last one. And and uh, you know, we, we saw a pretty wide, wide range of of issues come up. We had business uh issues uh raised at the community at large ones. We had a separate room for the woodcarvers was, right? So to to kind of run all over the gamut as to to what issues might be on, on the minds of folks that that show up, show up at uh those events.
I agree. All right.
So if I, if I could now, we, we are gonna bring uh, on the seventh, we have scheduled to bring the Wield ATV discussion to council, the seventh of September. At your workshop. So maybe that uh council's looking at that. And that, and that's been in for, in front of us before, that's a revisit of something that was in front of council about three or four years ago.
Okay.
So. Okay, I think we have some good information.
All right, thank you.
We'll see you in a couple of weeks with the, with a little bit more refined questions.
Thank you, City Manager Dave Zabel. Next, we'll go into item F, the two thousand twenty-two Community Block Grant Annual Work Plans and Allocations. Director White.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. And this time of year, we start our annual allocation process for both block grant funding, community development. community development block grant funding and home funds, funds reserved for residential application in low to moderate income families and neighborhoods. We're estimating this year or next year in two thousand twenty-two, we'll be receiving approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in block grant funding. The Planning Commission, the city's block grant advisory committee, performed public hearings in both June and July as required by HUD to hear presentations by those people that applied and those presentations totaled about one point two million dollars, if I remember right. The Planning Commission has forwarded their recommendations in the proposed resolution. And I would like to note for council that this year is the first year that we had to accommodate the section one oh eight loan repayment of two hundred thousand dollars for the Peanut Park Farmers Market Revitalization Effort. Other than that, the recommendations are quite similar to those that council approved in two thousand twenty-one. I did want to add that the Downtown Pasco Development Authority did not submit formal applications this year. However, the two projects that they have historically submitted applications for, support for the specialty kitchen and the downtown facade improvement program have been added as contingencies in case one of the approved projects, whatever that may be by council, is either spends less than anticipated or one project or, or more doesn't come to fruition. So those funds can be used again for those two contingent, excuse me, contingencies.
Okay, thank you, Director White. Any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, this is Councilmember Maloney.
Yes, Councilmember Maloney.
To be brief, just wanted to ask about the, Director White, could you, the Pasco Neighborhood Business District Additional Funds, could you just, two sentences to just to remind me of what that is?
Yes, it's the second phase, Mr. Maloney, of the Lewis Street Improvement Project. The first phase is.
Great, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, sounds good. If there's no further questions or comments, thank you, Director White. And if there's any, anything that comes up later on, you can always contact Director White to, to make a comment. And this will be coming, will this be coming in the next meeting next week?
Yes, Councilchair, Mayor, it will be, we'll bring a res, a formal resolution back to council for consideration. I think it's the first Tuesday meeting in September.
All right, thank you. All right, next we'll go to Resolution two thousand twenty-two, Home Annual Work Plan and Allocation. Again, Mr. Rick White.
Thank you again, Mayor and council. This, again, very similar to last year, is the home allocation of funding. Home Consortium is a three member cooperative effort between Pasco, Kennewick and Richland to receive federal funding that the cities otherwise would not be eligible for. We expect to receive roughly a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in home funds this year and perhaps as much as a hundred thousand or maybe even a little more from program income, which comes from repayment of these down payment assistance funds, which have historic, well, at least for the last four or five years, have been the sole source of the home applications awarded. It's been a very successful program. It's awarded to first time home buyers that meet the eligibility criteria and lets them get their foot in the door to get their first house. If they sell the house or no longer live in the house in the first five years, that ten thousand dollar down payment assistance loan must be repaid, which is where the program income comes from. However, if they remain in the house for five years or more, it is forgiven. So again, a very attractive program and, and very popular with first time home buyers.
And, and we usually use all that funding up, don't we?
Uh, we do. There's a bit of a concern this year about the price of homes because often, not often, but occasionally that will preclude a buyer from qualifying from their bank or credit union for a home loan. So we have added tenant, tenant based rental assistance again as a contingency in case we don't use those funds.
Thank you, Director White. Any comment or questions from the council?
This is Alvarado.
Yes, Councilmember Alvarado.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for that update. I'm, I'm wondering if we have any ability to offset, to change the amount that is loaned on for first time home buyers to offset, I guess to, yeah, offset the increased cost of housing, I guess that it could be, you know, same, same dollars and cents as what we used to do, but now it's taken into account that they're paying a lot more for homes.
We do, Mr. Alvarado. It would have to be worked through the, the process. The consortium again is a three member group and I, I believe that they have actually discussed this among themselves, staff at least, to accommodate just that. And if you want, I will be glad to put that in the next council meeting's agenda report on what that status is. And if, if not, we can examine it during the coming year.
Yeah, that'd be really great just to get a, a, a bird's eye view. I, I, I don't know what the proportionality of that is and so that, that's I guess where my interest lies. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Alvarado. All right, then we'll move right along. Thank you, Director White, once again for, for that report. Next we'll move, and again, I want to appreciate everybody here in the council for hanging in there tonight. We got two more items to go through. And the next one is the biennium financial update. Director Bichesigel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. This biennial update is our second quarter of the biennium, which ends on June of two thousand twenty-one. And overall, we have split the report into two different sections so that it, it, it makes, it gives it a little bit more clarity, which is our operating and our capital budget. You should expect our operating budget mostly to keep track with what we would call an elapsed time, which is essentially it accounts for the time that has passed throughout the year, throughout the months, and then also how much payroll we have processed. Because usually in operational budget, payroll is the biggest piece of, of the expenses. And I'm happy to report that so far, we are on track. We're a little bit over in our revenue than the elapsed time, which is a good thing. And we're a little bit less in the expenses than the elapsed time, which is a good thing. We are anticipating to be pretty much in line till the end of this year. And of course, we'll be discussing any biennium, mid biennium adjustments if we need to. The second part is the capital budget, which really is hard to predict overall in terms of where it will be at any point in the year. It really depends on not just all of the project schedules, but where some of the bigger projects are within those schedules. For example, as Lou Street Overpass is in construction and, and really in full swing, you will see some big numbers getting processed in the city's financial system. So with that, I can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Director Sigil. I would only suspect that Councilmember Maloney, do you have any questions or comments for Director Sigil? You're the master at these lists.
Well, I appreciate the notoriety. It looks great, Director Sigil. Thank you and your team so much for putting together such a wonderful set of information.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Maloney. All right, well, thank you for that. Dave, are we gonna go over miscellaneous?
Yeah, we have one more item, Mayor.
Okay, sorry.
It's the Columbia Change Order.
All right, thank you. So next and last but not least is the Resolution Change Order Number Two to the Columbia East Forest Main Project. Director Worley.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we're gonna have a real quick presentation on this particular item for a change order proposed for the Columbia East Forest Main Project. There's a lot associated with this item and we're gonna give kind of a high level overview. And then if anybody wants specific information, we can certainly provide that for you, knowing that it's late in the evening already. So with that, we're gonna have our senior engineer, John Pedvorig, do a quick overview. And then when he's done, I'll wrap up with a few additional comments and then we'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Director Worley. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. So I'm here to address the Columbia East Forest Main Change Order Number Two. To provide a little bit of context, this change order came about early this year. Some of you might recall when, when Texas had the freeze and it caused a big disruption in a lot of different systems. The one that impacted this project was a disruption to the Texas power grid. It turns out our project mostly consisted of HDP pipe and the two plants that produced that resin were both in Texas and both of them were, were mid process of operating when that shutdown happened. And so a bunch of equipment was damaged and pipes were full of melted plastic, then hardened up. A bunch of things had to be fixed that caused a large escalation in HDP price after bid opening and before contract award. And so we negotiated a change order with a contractor where for roughly, for over six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of price increase, the city plus tax, the city would cover about three hundred thousand dollars plus tax. So some sharing with the contractor, acknowledging it wasn't something that was underneath their control, but it wasn't fully the city's responsibility either. And so we're presenting that to council for approval hopefully next week.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, thank you, John. And I just wanted to add that, you know, when we look at projects like this, there are several things that we take into consideration. First off, we want the project to be successful and this particular project had a timeline associated with it. We're trying to get the project done in order to get another processor connected up to it. And so that was taken into consideration as we looked at this issue. We also take the position that we want our contractor to be successful and didn't want to delay the project anymore. And so we took a look at that as well. We also looked at the fact that all bidders likely faced the same situation in terms of the national increase in, in HDP pipe pricing. And finally, I just wanted to add that we, as council may remember, we have an EDA grant associated with this project and we believe that this change order is eligible for reimbursement through that grant. Paperwork has been submitted to the EDA for approval, but all indications thus far is that it would be covered. We do have a, a match rate that goes with it, but it is still eligible for reimbursement. So with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions council may have.
Thank you, Director Worley.
And a small add there, I forgot to mention earlier, I apologize. The approval from council would be contingent on final approval of EDA that they would contribute for that award as well, or for that, for that sum as well. So we've submitted it, we've heard back from their project manager and their legal team and both of them didn't have a problem with acknowledging it, but it went to the, the regional manager for their signature. So we would recommend that council would approve it, subject to approval from EDA.
Okay. And just, just to be clear, the potential reimbursement from EDA would be, it, it's a portion of the change order, correct? Or is it all of a change order?
It would be a portion of it.
A portion of it. Okay, well, thank you very much. Council, any questions or comments? Unfortunately, this is a, a situation where again, I know from reading the information that the contractor did everything he possibly could to try to have his bid honored on his, on his side and due to the unfortunate events of what they call the Act of God, the people did, the businesses didn't have to hold up to their end of, of the bidding estimates that they were given. So with that, do I hear council questions or comments from council?
Yeah, this is, this is Councilman Serrano. And can you just reiterate what portion of the grant the EDA will cover? We're looking at a near three hundred thousand dollar change order and what exactly is the EDA going to cover on that?
Excuse me, right now, the EDA grant is covering sixty-nine percent of the construction costs, including this particular change order. We hope that that might increase, but we won't know that till the end of the project.
Okay, and what was it covering prior to the excess in the change order?
Originally, the grant that we had received from EDA was a fifty percent match and it got increased or got decreased to a thirty-one percent match.
Okay. Was that associated with the change order prior to or contemporaneous or are they unrelated?
They are unrelated.
Okay. So we would have received the benefit of the EDA grant increase from EDA regardless of the excess cost, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, I'm just gonna throw this out there, this is a huge struggle for me. This is a critical project, but just a few weeks ago, we rejected something that I consistently hear and, and from folks in, in my district is that sidewalk on Burns up by the new schools and, and while it might not be critical to business infrastructure, it is critical for safety per, purposes for those kids. So I, I guess I'll, I'll just throw it out there. I, I'm really struggling to say, yeah, this one's okay, but we weren't okay with an increase in cost for safety related to children crossing the schools. So, well, I don't think any business should eat six hundred and fifty thousand dollars due to snowmageddon and force majeure stuff. I do question whether or not that individual, the business could press a force majeure issue on their supplier in the event that there's not a successful opportunity for that. I question, you know, whether then the excavating company did its due diligence to procure this pipe in a timely fashion. So the project is critical. I'm supportive of moving forward with it. Again, I struggle when we reject certain bids that have high social value, but maybe not as high economic value. And it's, it's going to, in particular, when it's impacting children's safety. So I'll get off my soapbox and, and leave you all with that.
Councilmember Serrano, this is Steve Worley. I wanted to mention to you that we did condition this offer on the contractor going after the force majeure issue with their supplier. And it turned out that the supplier was not willing to give in on it. And so we, we asked that they do that and they did and was not successful.
And I had another item to address regarding the prior project Burns Zone, because it was, it was me standing here a few weeks ago talking about rejecting bids on a project and now I'm advocating for, for paying a change order due to, you know, unique conditions. But we always look at if we think we are getting, if we think the bids were good and sometimes, you know, we might have a bid that comes in high, but if the market trajectory is high and we think it'll keep going, then, you know, it's unfortunate prices are, are above our estimate, but we might be financially well suited to accept today's price as opposed to have to pay tomorrow's. With the Burns Wood Project, we anticipate that we bidded the project late in the season and a lot of contractors were already busy. So we were going to be, pay a premium just based off of when the project went out to bid. And there were a couple of other factors when we reviewed the bid that made it look like the labor, current labor shortage, current COVID conditions, where, where a lot of work crews are short staffed because of COVID, you know, COVID issues in their work crews, that we don't anticipate that we would have a high bid if we rebid the project later. So it's a balance of, of being a good steward where we anticipate that with a couple strategies we're going to implement, we'll get a much better price on that project next year. Whereas the Columbia East Project, as far as we could tell, prices were going to be increasing past when we needed the project built. So it was to our advantage to act quickly and decisively and negotiate something with the contractor in a way that would allow the, the project to continue within the timeframe that it needed to be built without further cost increases.
No, I, I greatly appreciate that background. I mean, one, I hope that's helpful to any public that's hung on for two hours and nine minutes. And two, I, I think that's, I understand the distinction. I guess I'm just kind of lamenting being in the position of, of telling folks in my neighborhood, sorry, we're not getting that sidewalk because it costs too much. And then if they are paying attention to this, you know, we're willing to pay much more than those increased costs. I do recognize. I do recognize the value of timing. I recognize the force majeure, meaning this was out of their hands. I appreciate all that. I just feel like this is one of those where I want to make it right by everyone, and, you know, unfortunately, someone has to lose somewhere. And I do get the sense that some of the folks in my neighborhood are going to feel like they lost somewhere.
Yep, agreed and understood.
Yep, and I can, I understand your sentiments, Councilmember Serrano. But for what it's worth, I also think that with the change order, it's potentially at or near around where the next bid was. And in addition, I do still feel for, as Mr. Worley was indicating, we want to make sure that the contractors that do work for us are successful, and I don't think this is covering all their costs as well. So, I mean, all those things come into play when we make these decisions, and I think it's just appropriate to do what we're being asked here tonight. So with that, is there any other questions or comments from council? All right, well, thank you very much for the presentation, and...
Thank you.
We'll bring it back next week.
Next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wow. Next we'll go, we finished our normal items on the agenda, but we have miscellaneous council discussion. And City Manager Dave Zabel, would you like to begin?
So I have three, two quick ones and one, one I think council's going to really appreciate. So movies in the park this Friday, August twenty-seventh, six P M, Memorial. Certainly masks and group spacing are going to be part of the day. Also, a partnership with Tri-Cities Hispanic Chamber on a pop-up vaccination site. So we're pretty excited about that. And have not only an opportunity for a good family evening, but maybe an opportunity for some people to get vaccinated. Memorial Pool, the good news is, we were able to open that this year, and the community was able to make good use of it. But all good things come to an end. We'll be closing that for the summer on the thirtieth with the free swim. It will be that last day. And then on the thirty-first is the annual dog swim. Usually, nobody wants to go in after the dogs have been in there, so. That's usually the last day it's open. And then I do want to mention, this is a pretty exciting thing. So the council recalls, a couple years ago, we received our first distinguished budget presentation award from the Government Finance Officers Association. And I'll note, I'm going to read from the letter here, because I think the wording really can't get much better. This award is the highest form of recognition in government budgeting. Its attainment represents a significant achievement by your organization. In addition to receiving the award, your entity will receive the, your entity's budget received the following special recognition, special capital recognition. So the mayor's got a plaque he's going to hand out. And I, I'll note that the award's good for two years while the mayor's coming up, that the certificate is for the folks that are responsible, the individual or individuals designated as primary responsible for the award. So this is actually to the finance department. And so it's obviously a team effort, and Director Sigdel's a great team leader. Her team is up here with her to receive it. They're all stayed in here for the two hours and thirteen minutes now. And also, I did want to note that you can see the team there. There's a brass medallion that comes, and I think they're going to take turns wearing that once a week. They're going to buy a chain, you know. Anyway, congratulations to you all.
Thank you, Mayor and City Manager Zabel. We want to thank all of our partners in this, because in finance department, we just collect things. And if we did not get good quality information and help, we would not be able to achieve this award today. We're very proud of it, and I did some math, actually, during the council meeting. And one thing that we're really, really proud of with this award is the progress that we've made in the rating itself. And I'm not sure if my team behind me is aware of it, but they are pretty hard raters. And this year, we got sixty-two percent of all of the rating as outstanding, and the remainder of almost thirty-two point nine 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 percent as proficient. So we're very proud of that, and we're hoping that we will make even more progress. And we are looking at different ways of communicating some complicated budgets. It's not easy to understand in a way that is user-friendly in the future as well. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you Director Rita and staff. Couldn't be more proud. I mean, people really don't realize all the work that goes into this. But it's evident that you guys are doing a great job, and the award just solidifies the great work that you guys are doing, and I sure appreciate it. You know, we could be here all day long, and, you know, hopefully, someday we can have a banquet again, in which you could be honored with these type of awards, and just appreciate all the hard work you guys are doing. And especially with these times that we're facing today, stepping up to the plate like this and doing the good work you guys are doing really helps us out to focus on, you know, places like COVID relief and those kind of things. So thank you very much for all the work you do behind the scenes, and just couldn't be more proud. So thank you. Thank you, Dave. So any other questions or comments, or, excuse me, any comments from council?
This is Mayor Pro Tem Barajas. Just a quick congratulations to the staff, to Director Sigdel. Thank you for your hard work. Excellent job.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Barajas. I'd just like to mention real quick, Dave, Dave and I had a meeting last Friday with the Human Resource Director for Dairy Gold and the Diversity and Inclusivity Director. This meeting that we had was just to help give some information and direct on, you know, being an employer of choice. And the reason I bring this up is because so many great things are happening in the city of Pasco, as you are aware of all the new businesses that are coming in. And, you know, despite of all the other things happening, we must be doing something right to be the hotspot, if you will, of the Tri-Cities, because Pasco's got, Pasco, people are finding out it's the gem. There's a gem here, and they're trying to get a piece of it, you know. So it's really, really good to have these meetings and just to be able to share and continue with the progress here in Pasco. The other thing I wanted to mention tonight is I had a discussion and phone call with Ben Franklin Health District with Jason Zachariah. I'm getting a lot of community members that are now having a lot of questions. And as most people will have heard already, that the Pfizer vaccine has been FDA-approved as of either today or yesterday, I forget the exact date. It's approved for people sixteen and older, and there's still an emergency FDA approval for those that are younger than sixteen. And I believe it's from twelve to sixteen. And one of the, one of the questions that's been resonating very much is, of the people who are being hospitalized because of the virus, about ninety-five to ninety-eight percent of them are the unvaccinated. So the question lies, there's many people that are asking, well, if I've already got COVID once, well, I've had natural antibodies, I don't need to go get vaccinated. And that's the question that I asked Jason Zachariah from the Ben Franklin Health District. And there's evidence to show, and again, the reason I'm saying this is because I need you to go to the Ben Franklin Health District to ask questions if you're, if you have them, and you can get better informed. But there's evidence to show that the vaccine actually helps reduce the symptoms of perhaps if you get COVID again, because it doesn't stop you from getting COVID again. It just, there's evidence to show that it helps you with those symptoms, and then perhaps to a point where you don't have to be hospitalized, and that's the important thing. And all I'm trying to do is just keep people safe, keep our community safe, and just give you the options of what, of what you can do, and people you can call, so that we can keep our families and our community safe. I believe it reached nine hundred positive cases per one hundred thousand people in the last fourteen days. So it's not over. It's still climbing. Appreciate everybody cooperating with masks and distancing, and as you can see, you know, sanitizing whenever we can. And I just wanted to throw that out to the community. Again, it is your choice. You, you're the one who can make the difference in your family and with your surrounding communities. So thank you very much for that. If there's no further questions or comments or anything from miscellaneous, do we have a need for an executive session tonight? Thank you, Mr., thank you, Mr. Manager. I know the answer. So with that, thank you very much for attending, the council. Thank you for enduring this long meeting. It is nine twenty, and this meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.